Good afternoon, I'm now gonna call the Norfolk County Commissioners Meeting of Wednesday, October 13, 2021, to order. I'm gonna call a roll, Commissioner Stady.
Present.
Commissioner Collins.
Present.
Would you please stand, Commissioners? Join me in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This meeting is being held in person and on the web. On Thursday, March 12, 2020, Governor Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Chapter 38, Section 20. That order was effective immediately or until it is rescinded. Or a state of emergency is rescinded, or terminated. On Wednesday, June 16, 2021, by order of the legislature, the order was extended until April 1, 2020.
2022.
2022, thank you very much.
And votes may be taken on any of the commissioners?
Hmm?
I'd read that one too.
Votes may be taken on any of the listed items on our agenda, thank you. We have a quorum, saluted the flag. Item number three, minutes of the open meeting of October 6, 2021, for approval.
Uh, move approval, Mr. Chairman?
Second. Motion made, and second hall in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote aye. Number four, public comment for this meeting, is there anyone who has a public comment?
Uh, yes, I do have a public comment at the appropriate time.
Now's the time, Dennis.
Okay, well, thank you very much, uh, just two quick things because I'm playing hooky from another, uh, meeting that I'm on, and so I'll get right off, but I just wanted to, uh, to ask, you know, Commissioner Shay and Collins, I was on on the 29th of September, and I pointed out that, uh, on behalf, you know, my, in my position as Chair of the Foxborough Democratic Town Committee, I had written correspondence to each of you in your capacity as Commissioners, and, uh, I, I still don't have the response that you promised on the 29th of September. So I just wanted to ask about that.
Um, Mr. Norton, the, uh, the task of preparing a response on behalf of the Commissioners has fallen to me. Uh, we have gone through a couple of different drafts and are prepared, uh, to start sharing that information with the Commissioners to get their final impact input, excuse me. So I would suspect that there'll be final sign-off in the next day or two. Apologies, apologies.
Uh, and I just had one other thing, I, I wondered where the, uh, I understand that, that sometime in August, August, you had, uh, at least a part of the Abraham's Report, and, and I wonder where you stand now on appointing full-time, um, Chief Information Officer at the Registry of Deeds?
I don't know what the best answer is, but we have the full Abraham's Report as of last week.
Oh.
Um, it's available, by the way, on our website. Uh, it's up, and is it up on the website?
Uh, it is substantially up, there are a couple pieces that remain, but, uh, Mr. Buckley's working on that as we speak.
As announced at the end of last week's meeting, after accepting it, we are going to start meeting with our various Department Heads this fall, uh, in an orderly fashion, and make it available for everyone to comment, and we'll make, we'll make comments at each meeting, and we're gonna be inviting everyone. So if you wanna go to our website and download it, you can get that particular item that you're looking at, but you can also get the whole report which deals with each and every one of the county departments. And we're committed to vetting, a full vetting of the report. Um, I expect we'll be setting the dates to have all the departments in, in an orderly fashion. I don't know who's first, I don't know who's last, but they're all gonna come in. We've asked all Department Heads to study it too. We certainly, uh, expect, uh, comments from anyone and anybody that's interested in, in studying it, that's what it's all about. Took over a year to write. Well, it's lengthy?
Uh, thank you for that, I really appreciate that update, and, uh, the thought that popped into my mind was since the, uh, the issue, uh, you know, at least it seems to me that the issue of the CIO at the Registry is a, it's a very salient one, that, uh, perhaps that, uh, might be scheduled earlier rather than later in your review with Department Heads, it's just my observation, of course.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna tell you that because I don't wanna be wrong, and it remains to be seen, but certainly the Registry is a big part of everything we do.
Well, who'll be making the decision as to what the order is?
I believe the board will, I believe we will, I mean.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, if I may, kinda.
We had, I'm gonna turn it over to, to Commissioner Stady, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, Dennis, a couple of things we wanna clarify, and your points are well taken, alright? The, uh, the delay in part, by the way, in sending your response, it's difficult under the open meeting law to assemble us, you know, you have to give notice and things like that. So Mr. Cronin has the actuous task of soliciting comments from each one of us individually when he's drafting a letter, and sometimes we don't always agree on the contents of the letter, and so that's taking a little bit of time. Um, and I would admit that openly, I took a little time Columbus Day weekend or Indigenous weekend with my family, so perhaps I was tidying and getting back there, but you'll get that letter soon. Secondly, um, remember, we wanna clarify that there is somebody there, that position is full-time. The technicality is, the appointment, the appointment is temporary, not permanent, but there is somebody on duty. Third, as we've said, and I mean this politely, the Abraham's Report is a guide, and it's gonna be used by us as a tool in moving forward to our budget process. Just like on a town level, you have people that help out and give reports, we're gonna be using that in the same way. Uh, whether or not we take up the, uh, position, as you indicated, perhaps sooner rather than later, that's a good point, and perhaps that's something we need to talk about, and I'm sure Commissioner Shay will bring that up. But we're beginning the process of looking at it and vetting it out, and having Department Heads come in and talk about it. But in the meantime, as I said, that position is currently filled with a full-time person. Whether or not it's permanent, of course it's not, it's, it's temporary, but, um, I think your point is taken. Perhaps we should accelerate our look at the Registry, but we had others wanting to get up first. That's the best we can do at the moment.
Well, thank you, Commissioners, uh, I won't take up any more of your time. Again, I appreciate you listening to, to my comments, and I will take my leave now and go back to my other meeting. Have a good meeting, goodbye.
Bye, Dennis, good seeing you.
John Cronin.
Regarding public comment, none at this time, sir.
Just, yeah.
You're all set on public comment?
I am, sir.
Appointments, number five, we have none. Number six, old business.
Mr. Chairman, and Commissioners, for your benefit, in the packet, there's a letter from the operator of the View Restaurant. He wanted to communicate his, uh, opinion on the status of his contract to you for your information only.
Okay.
As you know, that con, excuse me, as you know, that contract is up at the end of calendar year 21, and we will be looking to bid soon, so I think he was, uh, imparting some of his thoughts, so it's for your information only.
Okay, is it, yeah, I'm sorry, just really quick.
Due next year.
Is it due next year or this year, when's he up?
July 1st, it was up last year, this was the extra year, due to COVID and everything, we decided we'd roll it the extra year.
Right, so if I'm not kidding, he's looking for a five-year contract, or a three-year, or something?
He's got some suggestions here, but we're.
He's making a recommendation.
We're gonna study it.
We do what we do.
Okay, okay, alright.
Subject to bid anyway.
Yeah, I was wondering, something like that, I should have to bid it out?
Correct, we intend to.
Okay, alright.
Just a thought, thank you.
Okay, old business then, concludes our old business, thank you. Number seven, personnel matters for consideration, we have two at the agricultural, three at the agricultural school, and one at the Registry Deeds.
I think I have to take one each one at a time, they're different, but for us, I'll move the, uh, acceptance of the Notice of Resignation for Julia Lee of Walpole as a student worker, effective 10/6/21, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, number three.
Second, uh, I move the notice, is that right?
Yes.
Uh, Notice of Retirement for Bradley A. Christensen of Walpole, Mass. As an Animal Science Warperson, Hay Production, effective 10/17/21. So moved.
Second.
Um, motion made, and second, I have a question, and Richard Fitzpatrick from the Agricultural School is here. This is a normal retirement, superannuation retirement?
Yes, yep.
How does?
Longstanding, um, Assistant Farm Manager at the school, over thirty.
Yeah.
Years of service.
Okay, and how does one?
Actually, he's never left the school, graduated, went to work.
Oh, really, that's a great story.
Never left.
Does that person get recognized tonight, or any kind of recognition?
Uh, I would expect to be proper to recognize him at some point, yeah.
Okay.
How do we replace the Animal Science Warperson?
Uh, that is a study that we're gonna take.
Oh, okay.
You know, what, what the needs are in that department.
Now, is someone else gonna act in his stead, or some way to?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there's some, there's certain skills that he has that I'm not quite sure if others have, in particular to, uh, hay production and things like that, that we'll have to be, uh, talking about with the farm manager.
Good, good, so it's a specialty?
I would say so, yeah.
In all jobs opposed to that school, yeah, yeah, okay, alright, that's my, I have no other. Motion made, and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we'll congratulate him on a later date.
Yeah.
One more, one more at this school?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'll move the Notice of Contingent Employment for Sierra Walsh of Mansfield, Mass. As a substitute instructor, and for the pay stated, effective 10/14/21, so moved.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, Registry Deeds.
I move, Mr. Chairman, the acceptance of the Notice of Resignation of Gary Lubin of Boynton Beach, Florida. As a temporary employee, uh, effective 10/4/21.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded, I have a discussion. You've heard me mention that I worked at the Registry Deeds in the sixty-nine and seventy? Gary Lubin was a full-time employee with me at sixty-nine and seventy. He does, I have noticed in my five years back, that he returns sometimes from retirement and, and works in the per diem, per hourly basis, I think this is.
And he's heading back down.
And he comes back.
Back to the. That's interesting.
Yeah, I think it's a pretty fabulous record.
Yeah.
Uh, it's a long, long time, it's a fifty-year involvement at the Registry Deeds, so.
Yeah, that's actually.
Speaks well of everyone, and certainly speaks well of Gary.
Yeah.
Now, whether he's coming back, one never knows.
Hey, that's interesting, alright, that was a motion made.
Motion made, and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Alright.
Number eight, payroll and expense warrants for approval.
These are them right here?
Mm-hmm.
This is it, alright, let's give it a shot, so first one, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of board, I'll move the approval of the, uh, weekly county payroll, hope I've got that right. Uh, warrant number twenty-two dash one-five, in the amount of one hundred forty-nine thousand, seven hundred fifty-five dollars, sixty-three cents, so moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, next.
And, I believe, the other one I have, is this one here?
Yes.
Okay, he ain't so sure either. Uh, this is for the, uh, other obligations for Norfolk County, let's see what it is, this must be expenses, right? Uh, the amount of seventy thousand, five hundred twenty-five dollars, forty-five cents. Oh, here it is, okay, yep, and it's the account, does it have it? I'll check, there's no account number on this, so. Is there county general fund, general fund reserves, so just, the amount is for the services? Am I got this right, let's see if I got this right.
Is that?
Trying to sort my way through it, normally it's printed out.
That's, that's my point, is that's.
That payroll, what is that?
That's the actual payroll.
And that's all I have in front of me.
Okay, that's all we have.
That's all we have.
These are expenses associated with the invoices attached to this voucher. So you're approving expenses totaling seventy thousand, five twenty-five, twenty-four-five, as Commissioner Stady indicated.
So that's for expenses, okay, yeah, so I'll move that, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, number nine.
Nothing from the Aggie School then, right, usually we have an Aggie School.
Yeah, not always, but usually we don't have.
Okay.
And it's in different form than usual.
Well, yeah, normally it's a piece of paper, but.
Okay, we're gonna check into that, I'll check into that, I noticed it too.
We're all busy.
Number nine, bid openings, we have none. Number ten, contract awards, we have none. Number eleven, report from, to, to, port to the Commissioners from the IT Department, I'm gonna turn it over to Director Cronin briefly before we introduce Mark, and this is something new that we're gonna be doing, I hope.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, a couple months ago, Commissioner Stady indicated an interest in having Department Heads from the county come in from time to time to give updates on their work, um, I've asked, uh, our IT head, Mark McDonald, to join us this week, um, in a timely way, because, uh, just a couple of weeks ago, the Advisory Board, through you and the Finance Committee of Norfolk County, approved a host of IT initiatives that are gonna have a profound impact on the way we conduct our business. Mark's here this afternoon to explain a little bit in layman's terms, and for your benefit, what these improvements mean, uh, for the work that is done here, so if I could ask Mark to join us at the table, um, Mr. Chairman, he'll go through the document that's in your packet, Chairman, Commissioners, and answer any questions, yeah.
Welcome, Mark.
Your Commissioners.
You're number one, you're first, you're a pathfinder here.
That's right, yeah.
We've had many, many Department Heads with us, and some used to be here every week, but we're gonna switch our mode of operating and give this system a try.
Excellent. Alright, so, uh, I, I think you might have, uh, the list that I'm, yeah, that I'm reading off of here. Um, it's gonna be a pretty exciting, uh, year for the IT department, we've got a lot of, uh, big and new changes that are coming up. Um, I thought I'd just discuss what they are and, and the benefits that we're gonna see from them. So the first, the first one that we're doing, uh, is for a new security system for the building. I heard back from the company today that they had received, uh, the PO, and that it is now in the stage of scheduling, so this is, uh, this is imminent. Um, this will allow us to have a secure office space at six fourteen high. It, it will allow the county employees to access the building, uh, with a card reader. Um, and we'll have a card printer, um, and we'll be able to give access to employees based on what we feel that, that the hours that they need access to the building. And this will also apply to the maintenance people across the street, uh, so anyone that needs to do business here will have a card that will allow them in. It will automate access and, excuse me, and lockdown of the building during working hours, so, um, at the end of the day, when the work, you know, we, we determine what hours we want the doors to open, on that schedule, they will automatically be opened and closed, uh, at the start and end of Business Day. Any people who want to access, you know, before or after, will, will need to use their card to do so. Uh, the, the building will be monitored and, uh, will send notifications to whoever we determine gets those notifications, so, uh, I'm gonna certainly be one of the people, so if there is any kind of a breach, uh, with the, the, uh, security system, I will get a, a notice on my cellphone, um, and then I can either come to the site, or if it's, uh, if, if I come and deem that the police need to be here, I can do that. We also have the flexibility of, um, of having these breaches go right to the police department, and that's something that I'm gonna discuss with John, whether that's the route we wanna take. And we'll also be able to monitor, uh, based on people using their access card, who, who and when comes into the building, so we have a little more control over, uh, what happens there. And so that should all be, that should all be starting, I, I would expect, within the next few weeks. Uh, the, the second one, another giant one, and this is something, um, that is part of the Abraham's, uh, Report, is we're going to be, um, migrating our infinite visions that is currently on premises, um, it's running on servers downstairs, um, and people access it through our firewall to, to get onto it. We're now gonna be doing it on the cloud, so the need for people to be coming through our firewall to get into the, the servers downstairs will go away, and that's a, that is a, uh, a security bonus for us, so, you know, the, the, the less amount of people that have access to our network, um, the better. And this will allow people to access infinite visions from anywhere, from home, they can access it from a phone. Uh, they can do it, uh, from the office here. Um, another benefit is that it, it's backed by, uh, Amazon Cloud Services, so they will be backing up all the data, uh, that's on there, and, uh, I think Amazon, you know, guarantees like a ninety-nine point eight percent, um, success rate, meaning they never fail. So that, and we kind of, we're counting on that. Um, it also has multi-factor authentication in order to give you a system, which means more than just one password. Um, you will get with your fir, after you use your first password, you then will get, uh, an authentication to your cellphone, so they need to know that it's you that's logging in, so that we protect our data. I, I'm currently working on a migration from our current email provider, excuse me, um, which is Smarter Mail, we're gonna be moving to, uh, Microsoft Office, which is also a cloud-based product. Um, what this is going to do for us is allow anyone to get their email, um, on any device, whether it's their phone, their home PCs, their PCs here, and it also will sync up, so for example, if you have calendars that you have, uh, calendar, um, appointments that you've put into your calendar, it will sync up to your phone, so you don't have to input this stuff in multiple places, it's all, it will sync up to all of your devices, uh, for both contacts and for, uh, the calendar, uh, which is a big benefit. And along with that, we're going to be installing Microsoft Office on all the, uh, employees' PCs, uh, the latest and greatest product, uh, uh, from Microsoft. It also works in the cloud, so that there is, uh, there's the ability of collaboration, um, you can have multiple people working on a document, um, it also allows for you to have access, you know, if you create a document at your desk here at the office, and you wanna work on it at home, you can do it because it's stored in the cloud, so you don't have to get access to your machine here or the network in order to, uh, to, to update those documents. Second page.
Okay.
Sure. Oh, uh, so, as soon as we get the Smarter Mail converted, we, what we need to do, uh, because, uh, part of the Microsoft, uh, three sixty-five that's gonna be installed, uh, is you get a, a license for your email, so, once they move our NorfolkCounty.org into the cloud, then I can start installing it on everyone's machine, and by installing it, it will, it will create a, uh, email account, uh, for people in the county who, uh, who don't have, uh, who are not gonna be installing the software on, we can create an email account for them as well, so they can, they can get the benefits of, uh, uh, using, uh, the Microsoft three sixty-five for the email. And if there is need be for anyone afford to have, uh, Microsoft Office on their laptops or, or whatever, we can, we can accommodate that as well.
So to the Commissioner's point, I think we can measure that progress in a month or two, you think?
Oh, yes, yep, uh, actually, we've started, um, I've got an engineer work from GetFused, who is, uh, email provider, they're working on it today. Um, we're gonna, we, we're going to be purchasing, uh, three new servers, two for, uh, this building, and one for the engineering department, um, so I'll be installing and configuring those within, uh, the next two months. And that's just gonna give us, you know, this is part of a five-year rotation that I have for our equipment. Um, these, all three of these servers are at their, uh, lifespan, so we're just gonna roll and, roll them into new machines. It's gonna give us, uh, the, the latest, greatest as far as speed and capability, uh, storage. Uh, benefit of that is that we're not gonna be housing, uh, infinite visions on them anymore, so, uh, the servers don't necessarily have to be as robust as, as, you know, from a, uh, memory standpoint as the ones that we're replacing. And John has asked me to, uh, create a county, uh, IT policies and procedure guides, uh, just to, uh, give kind of a, uh, guidance on how to use our equipment, how to use our internet, best practices, um, that type of thing. Um, I'll be working on that. Uh, I've already started, but going forward, I expect to have that done within the next three months, and with the completion of that, um, I'll just distribute the guide, but also, we have a software uh, that's called, uh, No Before, which is a internet training software that we've done here in the past, kind of, every employee has to take it, they've got to, uh, they've got to complete like ninety, ninety-eight percent of the, uh, training, I get reports on how they're doing, so I can, I'm able to shoot them out an email saying, you know, don't forget about this, you know, we wanna get this done, and it just gives best practices for, um, using the internet in, on a network and, uh, keeping it safe, and these are all, these are all things that we, we find very important here to, you know, protect our, you know, our data and our assets. And, uh, finally, uh, on this list, we're gonna be migrating to a new NorfolkCounty.org website. Bill has been meeting with the, uh, the vendor about this site, and what this will do, this will give the county website a fresher, more current look than the, the, the website we have now. Uh, the new website will be more user-friendly, easier to find information on, um, and it, uh, will allow for easier access to county documents and scheduling. And those are just a few, I could, I could have had a ten-page report on, on the things, uh, that are going on here, and, but I'll save the others for the next time I come. Any questions that I can help you with?
I have two, do you have any, Commissioner?
Yeah, a couple, yeah.
True, go ahead.
Probably practical stuff, so, I got a business guide, there's my address on it, and you're saying very soon that address will be no good, we're gonna need a new address, there won't be Norfolk County.
No, it will be Norfolk.
Oh, it still will be?
Yeah, but it'll be just housed in, by Microsoft and.
Okay, so the, our email address is not changing?
I've changed.
For our constituent contact, things like that?
Yep.
Okay, that's cool.
Yep.
Uh, the other thing is, if I may, Mr. Chairman, um, ba, 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 okay, county IT policy.
Yes.
A discussion, but IT, obviously.
Yes.
So are you gonna be looking at developing that in terms of here, or in terms of county-wide? Are you gonna be talking to the registrar, and even the Aggie, and develop that, or is your focus a little bit more narrow?
I think, I think right now it's for here.
For here, okay.
And, I mean, I think, you know, I think that the type, the type of, uh, policies and procedures can, certainly can be expanded, right? So it's not specific to this building, uh, but, you know, we'll, we'll start here and, and then, then if we, if we feel we need to move it in that direction, we can.
So what are we gonna see when we do our email in the future, we use the Microsoft Office, is that what's gonna happen?
Right.
We're using that, but our emails stay the same?
Email.
Contact is just a different cloud, yeah, that's in the cloud, right, that's great, that's great.
So it just, it will allow for, for expanded use of the product?
Yep, I'd be interested to talk about it later time, maybe the, do we notify the police, is there an upside, downside, is there a cost involved?
Right.
Yeah, so I wanna take the thunder, but that was all I had for now, that's great job, thank you, Mark.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I, I, I mean, is it easy to notify the police, I mean, does it cost anymore?
No.
Uh, well, it, it, I think it does, it does cost more for them to have the monitoring that will, that will automatically go to police or fire.
I thought it was. It shouldn't.
It shouldn't?
No, no, it's a, it's a ping to their, uh, to their front desk, their dispatcher.
Okay.
That can come in the form of.
We have no connection to the, to police now, right? If someone broke a window or was in here at night, would, nothing goes off?
No, nothing goes off.
Okay.
I wonder if that, that could be a plus when our insurance carrier, if we provide that.
I think we definitely.
That should be a plus side.
If you wanna do this, I think we should be hooked up to the police. I mean, hopefully they don't, they don't spend a lot of time here, but.
Do you know what's the cost, there's only, I know in some community, there's a cost associated with it, and they pay it through.
If it's, if it's zero, a lot, a little, I think we should.
Should we clarify that maybe?
We don't do this too often.
Yeah.
Regardless of what happens.
That would be.
With the adoption of all this other stuff about IT, and if you read the famous Abraham's Report, yeah.
I have.
You have, you'll be hearing about it again, so.
Yeah.
I want you to make yourself an expert on that.
Yeah, sure, yeah, definitely look at that.
There's gonna be a lot of questions.
Yeah.
One more question, you said that, how does this affect the public during the day for coming, getting into this building?
Uh, it'll be open.
Okay.
During business hours.
Okay. Have a big.
Okay.
Right. So, if we want to come in on the weekend and do work, we just need to keep.
Your thing will show that the Commission State is here.
Yeah, that's good. That's what, that's what we do at the school.
And we can also.
It tells who's in, there's a log.
Yeah, but it can also determine who should be here on the weekend.
Oh, yeah.
There's a list of who should be here, or could be here.
So, you can, on each card, you can give them access by hours or, you know, full access, whatever, whatever we determine.
Interesting. Good point.
And there'll be software here to.
Who was the contact person if someone was a community during the night would be?
That would be me.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
You might, unfortunately, I was the contact person for years at Quincy City Hall. We had older, much older system than this would be.
You got a lot of calls.
Well, we got to know a lot of midnight to 7:00 AM police officers because it was an old, old building and, oh my God. You know, and unfortunately, sometimes people would, they cleaned it up a lot. But, I mean, they would, they would go in there and spend the night. Eventually it would trigger something.
Right.
So, I am familiar with it. And then they tightened it up a lot. I'm sure it's, it's much better now because the old building is only a museum now. But I went through all this.
I think it makes.
I think it's important in this day and age. I don't mean you want, as long as there's a clear path. And we do have it at the registry, by the way.
We do have that.
Yeah, we have that active shooter thing and we hooked up with some of our stuff. Thank God we don't use it, but it's there. I hope it's still, I'm sure it still works. I will ask during.
If I may, I just wanted to compliment, in my short time of being Commissioner, relatively short, every time I've had an issue with my email or anything getting access, he's been very responsive. He's right on the ball regardless of when it is, the weekend or whatever. He's, he's very good, very professional, does a great job, so.
I don't have a problem with my email, yeah. I have no problem with that. He does a great job.
Nice job. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
If I could just give you a couple of points. Mark, confirm that the security system, we get our fraud readers, that fraud reader can also be a form of identification. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, that's one thing we don't have right now. And I think people who work for the county ought to have an ID.
Yeah.
And so, the ID can be an embedded security card at the same time, very common now.
Yes, and also. Also, it has the capability of using your cellphone as a, as your access.
Right. Oh, okay. Yep. That's even better.
They usually lose.
Because people lose cards, but they don't usually lose their cellphone.
Confirm that the Amazon Web Service backend or cloud does feature a cybersecurity firewall, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. One of the more advanced.
Yes, right.
And finally, for the Commissioner's benefit, when I asked Mark to start drafting a policy and procedure, he wasn't the only one. We've been talking, as you know, with all the department heads about performance evaluation. And where it's relevant, I'm asking each of them to take on the task of starting to write down the policy of why and how they do what they do. And these documents now need to find a home. And in my, my experience, the best place to put them is on an Intranet. They do not need to be public facing, but they should be available to all staff at all times. So, if you're anywhere and you want to find out how to get an email address or how to archive email or what is our internet policy or any of that information, it's laid out in the policy and it's endorsed by your vote and it's on the website perpetuity. And that plus a number of other documents can be posted in this Intranet, including our collective bargaining agreements, our handbook on employee, employee handbook, I should say. They're all, they all should be in a common electronic space for people to access. Because right now, as you all know, when we try to track down a policy, we all wondered, we have their latest and greatest. Were there any amendments to it? Electronic library is the place to go.
There's a website, another website, not for, not on the web.
It's called an Intranet.
Intranet.
Yeah, only internally users can see it. Yep.
Sounds great.
So, that's another feature that we're moving towards because it's a tremendous benefit. I had that at the Department of State Police where all the policies and procedures for the department and the laboratory listed for anyone to access at any time. In fact, for the laboratory is part of accreditation, you need to have those accessible. So, Mark's on the tip of the spear and Commissioner State, I'm grateful that you acknowledged Mark's talents and hard work. It's been my pleasure to work with him for the last three months. And so, it's very good what he does. We're lucky to have good staff here.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good job.
Okay, that's right.
Thank you, Mark.
By the way, that's the new uniform, okay?
I recognize you.
Wait, I have to bring this to the jury. I came in every day.
I didn't recognize Sean McGowan today.
He'll forget your program if you want to. Good seeing you, Mark.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you, Mark. Number 12, report on the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, Director Cronin.
Very briefly, Mr. Chairman, a lot of progress this past week. We've had a couple of meetings with our vendor, Clifton Larson Allen, culminating yesterday in a walkthrough with Plymouth County, going through the portal, sort of testing it to make sure it will receive applications, and it does. We are moving quickly for our Go Live this coming Monday. Word has been sent to every city and town in Norfolk County. First, that we're holding a town hall tomorrow morning at 11:00 AM, it's virtual, where we'll be unveiling, if you will, the live portal and some other information to share. I'll be introducing the Clifton Larson team to the cities and towns so they'll know who to speak to whenever they have any support issues. And in addition, the portal itself will be opening at 9:00 AM on the 18th. We'll be getting a new, it's called the URL address where the applicants will go. We have not gotten the final word about the name of it is. It might be our own Norfolk County Director's website. It's a new website with more power behind it, which we thought was a sensible solution because, as you know, we're moving away from our current domain into a new one. So, this keeps it uninterrupted. Very excited about this opportunity. And I just wanted to pass the law, Norfolk County is the second of the four counties that's moving in the direction of this portal through Clifton Larson. Plymouth County opened about two weeks ago and they've not yet received an application. So, we'll stress upon our communities to make sure that they're ready, that they have a plan. But most of all, that we're ready to help them when they're submitting their application. So, things are looking up and tomorrow, I'm looking forward to a lot of participation, questions and answers. And of course, we post it for you to be available if you'd like as well. If you do participate, I'd be happy to have you open in the remarks. So, that is all I have on our.
I will not be there. I'd like to be, but I can't.
I will be there.
You will be there, then.
We'll be here, but virtually.
Oh, virtual. Okay. Do you need someone in here?
No.
Do we hear? Oh, I, no, I do it virtually.
Yeah, I will be here.
I'll miss you. But thanks. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Great of the Commissioner State if you're coming in.
No problem.
Thank you. 13, report on COVID-19 response.
Very good. I've had some verbal dialogue with folks about our existing policy that you all signed on. Where non-vaccinated persons within Norfolk County who work for us need to be masked at all times. There's been a couple of reminders passed around. I continue to monitor the events outside Norfolk County. There are other jurisdictions, including the city of Boston, as well as the Commonwealth that have certain stringent vaccination requirements of employees who come in contact with the public. They have not reached the level of county government yet, but I'll monitor if, if any of those impacts come our way. One particular area I'm going to be reaching out to the trial court on is in the event that the trial court has a similar vaccination directive, what impact would it have on our facility workers, for example, who are in the facilities every single day? So, it's just monitoring. We want to be mindful of what the world around us is doing. But according to what I hear from you, I think everybody feels like we're in a safe place. That is all I have on COVID.
Excellent. Number 14, first approval of personnel phones. As you know, Michelle Aberdini has restructured the blue papers.
I think we can remove this one because I believe this was already approved last week.
I think it was.
I mean, it was. Yeah. So, that's just.
Were you thinking last week?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. The show came in.
I'm sorry. I thought, I thought we were going to study it for a week. Maybe we already did. That's fine.
Yep.
Bobby it for me. So, we're going to be on the new papers starting.
Immediately.
Immediately.
Yep.
Were we on the new paper today?
I believe it was.
Okay. Okay, that's good. Okay. Number 15, report of the county director.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Just a couple of things, just an update on hiring. We've identified three candidates that have moved beyond interview to background check for facility maintenance workers. That process is moving quickly. I know we have some vacancies that must be filled. There are three very good candidates with experience and we're looking forward to bringing them on board. Hopefully, we'll be seeing their blue papers very shortly. Engineering Department similarly has had two interviews of candidates for the engineer position in that department. Waiting to hear from Patrick, no, actually, Michelle was going to mention the next second round interviews and those should be coming up in the next week or so. Assistant superintendent for the golf course, there was a candidate that was interested. He withdrew. Carl and Michelle are looking to repost that position immediately. And then finally, the treasurer's office, as you know, had an administrative assistant approved. That position has received over 15 resumes. The treasurer notified the HR director yesterday that he wishes to conduct interviews, I believe, of three or four of them, and we'll be doing those in the next week or so. The site assessor associated with DCAM has reported today to Quincy District Court to begin her work. She emailed me this morning and said her walkthrough went very, very well and she's looking for documentation on past quality of air or air quality reports and so forth. I'll get those over to her with delay. Yesterday, Treasurer Bellotti conducted the OPEB trust meeting, I believe it was the first one in a while. We had a conversation with our investment advisors and Marshall Incorporated, I believe. We also talked about possibly bringing in Stone Consulting in the next meeting to imagine a scenario where the county will be given or buy into a schedule of how much money we should be committing every year, a minimum, towards the OPEB liability. As you all know, from the supplemental discussion we had, our liability is substantial and our advisors simply likely want to see a plan, something in writing. There was some discussion about how the plan at one point had a considerable amount and that has been backed off in the last several years. So, we're probably bringing Larry Stone in sometime in December at our next meeting today, get their feedback on what direction the county should be moving in. Tomorrow will be our mandatory PEC, Public Employee Committee meeting. First, I'll be meeting with Michelle Melty and then members of the PEC. That'll be also virtual. It's a hybrid. This group is, as you know, charged with looking at our health benefits and employee contributions. We'll be talking a little bit about the next steps as pursuant to the prior agreement, which expires, I believe, Friday. So, we're entering the new phase in negotiations and that will begin tomorrow.
What time is that?
I caught me off guard there, Commissioner.
If you're going to 11:00.
There's, yeah, no, it's in the afternoon. I'm seeing Michelle first and then we're having the PEC in the afternoon.
So, is this preliminary negotiations?
It is, yeah. The agreement.
Just the opener, so to speak.
Kind of an opening round.
Yeah, if I could briefly introduce you. The memorandum of agreement between the commissioners and the public employee committee that was drafted on October 16th, 1919, excuse me, 2019, indicated that the group insurance coverage after June 30th, 2022, the county or its designated will begin negotiations for a successor agreement pursuant to Section 19, no later than October 15th, 2021. So, we're getting in under the deadline for opening this.
Wow.
Opening the discussions associated.
Just did it.
With those requirements.
Okay, thank you.
That is all I have, Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you. I have two other items under number 18 and number 16. They're not emergencies, but I wanted to make a few comments. Number one comment was, I was reading the front pages of Patriot Ledger yesterday and it was an article that started off about a veteran who's giving rides to other veterans. A 90, a 79-year-old Vietnam veteran from Quincy. Normal, good piece. And as I was reading it, I realized he was one of our drivers from our RSVP.
Wow.
It was right on the front page. Robert was aware of it. It was a real good piece. So, I'll get it all to you if you didn't see it. And it really, it really made RSVP look good and it was a great out. And I, Ledger came out and interviewed everyone and spent some time on it, so it was good. And I wanted to say again, thank you for today, for everyone. Our little memorial for Chairman O'Brien, which I was having nightmares about that it was going to rain or do something crazy, is over and done with and. You know, I think it was more than fitting and this day of COVID, you don't have the big, the big send-offs like we couldn't. Couldn't have it when he died, but within six months of his passing. And we were trying to get it done last week, which would have been his birthday. But after meeting with everyone, we couldn't get it done last week. So, thank you to everyone and Bill and John and again, John McGowan. It came offline and I thought it was fitting and I think we touched the message. We got the message out we wanted to get and I'm sure for any of these families, very happy. I know they're very happy and, you know, it's a fitting end. And we didn't spend a lot of money, so everything was good.
You know, when someone passes on, it's always a sad event, mental home role.
Right. You're not ready, but you're.
But today was more of a really great celebration.
Yeah.
And I want to tip my hat to you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I knew we were going to do it. I said it in the beginning of the year.
Well done.
I talked to him about it, believe it or not, and I, I'm glad it's over with. Because, you know, you wait and you go longer and this is, and this really should have done that.
Very good. All the people that we've said today.
It's good.
The maintenance people and all these officials and our board, I think that sells proud. It was great.
We had the chairs and the.
Just enough.
We had the chairs from the agricultural school. We got the PA from the agricultural school. The rock was there.
Yeah.
And.
It looks beautiful, so.
Yeah, the flowers were too.
Really does. Great job. Really, great day.
Yeah.
Great day for the county. So, it's, will there be a little story? I hope there'll be a press story or something about that.
We had someone there.
Ledger or the.
We're going to release.
There's a roving person that Bill gives the stuff to.
Yeah.
I forget his name.
Totally fitting. Yeah. That's true, Brian. So, be great. That's great. Great job.
All right. If we have nothing else, I'm going to ask for a motion adjourned. We do have an agricultural school meeting at 6:00 PM tonight.
6:00 PM, right? And that's live.
That's live. No, it's in person at, at the school.
I'll move adjournment at 2:33.
Motion made, second in all favor of adjourned.
Aight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are adjourned.